Okay, a little bit beyond seven o'clock, we will start the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knopf?
Here.
Chantet? Solfa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi? Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Jerome?
Here.
And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 12 out of 14.
Okay. Next up would be a reminder to please speak directly into your microphone for the recording tonight. And anybody that's online, if you are not speaking, make sure you are muted. We had issues during the first meeting. Next up would be items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have anything? Change or remove? Okay. Up next would be matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody online? See anybody in the audience that's not here for something on the agenda?
No hands are up.
Okay. We'll move right into the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, Resolution 21-72-R, authorizing execution of contract with MM Peters Construction Incorporated for the 2021 Public Works Garage Sewer Line Replacement. Do we have any comments? If not, I'll make a motion that we recommend the consent agenda to the City Council.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Knopf. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Jerome?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Chantet? And Solfa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 12 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Up next will be a discussion on resurfacing and future maintenance of the public parking lot located on South Batavia Avenue between First Street and Main Street. Laura?
Thank you. We staff held a meeting on June 22nd and we sent out letters and emails to the property owners and business owners for those who own property in the parking lot or whose businesses are adjacent to that parking lot to discuss the potential options pertaining to long-term ownership and maintenance of that parking area. It's generally bounded by Main Street on the south, Batavia Avenue on the east, and First Street on the north. Most of that parking area is privately owned by various individuals and also including the city of Batavia. Easements have been granted to the city by those private property owners to provide for public access and use of the parking area. And they've also been granted to the city the right to perform certain maintenance activities, but not the obligation. And so we wanted to work with both the property owners and business owners who have expressed a desire to improve the condition of that parking area and the overall aesthetics so that it can be used by their patrons and visitors as well as a desire to have events there too. And since the city shares many of these same goals, we want to find a mutually agreeable way to move forward and be able to maintain this area for those purposes. So we had a discussion and reviewed the existing easements and other agreements and property ownership in the area. And then we discussed some maintenance ownership and funding alternatives that would provide for resurfacing and future maintenance. It first, the first alternative was the creation of an active special service area to fund perpetual parking lot maintenance and the resurfacing. The second option was property ownership transfer from private to public and that that would then in the future be maintained as simply another of the city's public parking lots. Property rights transfer from public to private, that the existing easements with the city would be terminated and our, we could either retain ownership of our individual parcels within there or sell them to private owners and then it could be maintained by a property owners association. I'm sorry, so the third option was property rights transfer from public to private. The rights and responsibilities for future maintenance would be with each of the individual property owners. But the last option D was formation of an association and purchase of the city properties so that all of the adjacent owners would, through being members in that association, pay dues to them for the resurfacing and future upkeep and maintenance. There were about 10 people who attended that meeting and through discussion and questions at the end of the meeting, there seemed to be a general consensus that it would be preferred if the proper value could be agreed upon to transfer ownership rights to the city and have them maintain it into the future as another one of our city parking lots. However, those present represented, you know, a fraction of the total group of property owners and business owners in those adjacent properties. And so as a follow-up to the meeting, we sent out this agenda and the information that has been presented to you in this memo about the pros and cons of each one of those different alternatives as well as the results of the meeting and invited anyone who was interested to attend this committee of the whole meeting this evening at 7:00 PM because we were bringing the matter back to the City Council as part of this committee of the whole meeting to determine how they would like to move forward with this project. Because certainly the, that parking area is in dire need of a resurfacing and is no longer salvageable through maintenance activities. We did lay down some patching in the parking lot last fall, but that, you know, didn't, didn't stay in place because of the condition of the parking lot with the plowing that we did over the winter time. So it's, it's in quite a state and I think everyone involved wants to see this put back in, into repair and into good use and a good representation of our city to people who are visiting this area.
Right, and I think from, you know, what I've been through there a few times and I think the, the best section of it is probably the newest, which is what the city owns, the middle of that, the westerly leg of it.
Right.
That's still probably in decent shape. But the rest of it, because it's all different property owners, is in such bad condition and all different. Truly is, looks like, you know, one year somebody decided to fix their section of the parking lot, so that's got different blacktop on it from the next one or different patches, whatever. So I, I really feel like the, the right thing to do is if we can get that done and get them to, all to agree to it is that the city takes it over. So that way it main, it's maintained as a municipal lot. You know, Gary probably doesn't want to hear that adding more to the, the table, but I also think it's probably easier for them to deal with if it's all owned by the city. You want to chime in on that, Gary? I know you don't want me to add more to your plate, but...
No, I, I agree that comprehensive ownership strategy, so I think the theory is that each owner would sell it to the city for a nominal sum. City would then take comprehensive ownership and we could then devote city resources to maintain a city-owned property. Right now it's very difficult for 26,000 people to invest money on what is essentially private property. So that's kind of the quandary we're in right now.
Yep.
Alan?
Abby, go ahead.
We had a follow-up meeting between a number of the, a number of the members that were able to attend the first one hosted by, by Laura here at City Hall, but we were still not able to get all of the business or property owners to the table to discuss. Conversations kind of bounced back and forth between preference, but again, it was still a minority and none of, none of them were able to, I don't know who's in the audience right now, but at that point when we were speaking, none of them were able to attend tonight. And so the ones that were present there had asked that we could bring it back. They would like more time to discuss the options, come to you with a united front on what they think would be the best option.
Okay, that sounds good. Say, you know, do the aldermen that have that in their word want to make sure that they try to put pressure on the constituents that they need to show up to these meetings so that we can get a decision on this and move forward.
I would ask Gary, is there some point at which we would need to know what the direction is in order to be able to take actions by, let's say, next construction season?
So there's another aspect to this project, which really doesn't have anything directly to do with the parking lot, but it has something to do with the parking lot. And that is that we still have to separate the sewers along First Street. But now that we have the sewer separated on Main Street, we do need to bring a sewer up through the parking lot, up to First Street in order to serve First Street. So obviously we don't want to do that after the parking lot's better built.
Right.
We don't want to do that before the parking lot gets rebuilt. So if, if we're talking construction next year, we'll probably be doing the sewer work again as soon as the, as soon as the, the snow melts and so we could then get the parking lot done and completed again early in the season so that it can be used throughout the rest of the summer. So to answer Laura's question, we would need to move very quickly if that's the case. Now, if we go to a 23 construction cycle, then we obviously have more time.
Right.
But if we're looking at doing that in 22, and if the desire is to get this resurfaced in 22, we, it's already July. We need, we need to move quickly.
We start making budgets in August.
Right, and I understand that. I'm just thinking of the businesses and what they've been through already with getting Main Street and 31 done, you know, and how long that has taken and then to throw this right back at them the following year.
Yeah, we talked about that at our meeting actually and said that everyone may want to take a...
The extra year, then, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, as long as we don't think we're going to like lose a car back there or something in a pothole, we, I think could wait a year, might be the best thing for that, that business block to be able to, one, get everything lined up, make sure that everybody is on board with it, move it forward and not have to rush to get that done and then throw them into construction immediately.
Yeah, I think our agenda even listed potential for 22, 23, or even 24 construction.
I just have one question. Is there any concern of, there's always a concern for somebody to get injured, but with how deteriorated the parking, parking lot is, is there a risk for us?
Right now it's private property.
It's a risk, it depends where that happens in the parking lot and on whose par, on whose property.
Right, but like right now for the city portion of it, because it's a very significant part of it.
The city's portion's in...
It's in pretty good shape.
It's in really good shape.
Yeah.
Like I said, that's, that's really the best part of the lot.
Even the one little spot that's kind of off of the right of way. I mean, looking at the map behind, it looks like it's behind that dental office.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's still in pretty good shape, that section.
Alan, I have a question. This is probably a very small aspect of this discussion, but how is snow removal currently happening?
We've always, that's part of the easement agreement, is it does obligate us to perform winter operations. So we've always done that.
Can I ask what that nominal fee would be? I mean, is it like a dollar just to show sale or are we looking at actually purchasing property?
In my mind, it is a negotiation. However, the upside to the property owners is that they have a parking lot that will be regularly maintained at the same level as other public parking lots, but will, this will be a, a public space that serves their building. Their tenants can park there, their customers can park there. So to say that it's the fair market value of the land, I think is too high because their properties and their businesses will be continued to be serviced by the city.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think it should be anything. I mean, I'd love to sell you my backyard and you guys maintain it for me. It's, it's, it's all advantage for them, nothing for us. So when it's nominal, I didn't know if there had to be a sale, so it's minimal, but I wouldn't, I, I mean, an SSA almost sounds better for us. We still do all the maintenance, but it's being paid for. Here, we're paying them to do their maintenance. Doesn't seem to make sense. And it's not, I, I don't know, is it an area where we need public parking? It seems like this is 100% serving their businesses, which is great, I'm, I'm all for it, but it's got to be fair to the city. We're taking on a lot of obligation and liability and paying to do so doesn't seem logical.
It seems like right about the time I think I got on the council is when we bought that last piece. Mayor might remember, right in the middle of that, that we bought and improved that piece in the, in the middle of that block. And that was one of the things that we talked about is, yes, it supports those businesses, but that also keeps that block viable. And the fact that we have or would have more public control of that parking lot, I think is, is better into the future, you know, for, for, for that entire area that's there. Because it does, I don't think it's only used by those businesses. I think it's also used for overflow from other places, including the church, including, you know, the funeral home. I think there's other sources of use that use that parking lot than just the businesses that back up to it.
That's correct.
I think I know what Nick's getting at, is that if we buy this for whatever sum they want, then, then other, other places will just be like, well, I'm just not going to maintain my parking lot and the city will buy it. That's why I thought the same thing, like, how much are we going to be looking to spend is the question?
So I know that, I don't have the full language of the easement agreements in front of me, but I know that in one line it says, "In exchange for city maintenance of the parking areas, the owners will grant an easement for parking, public parking on their properties." I don't want to speak for all of the businesses and there's probably a point where I should probably hang up here, but, you know, there's, there's concerns across the board about some of people would be losing half their property. And it's been used as a public parking lot and maintenance was assumed to be part of that deal. And so they've seen it degraded and, and, and now are being, you know, it's, it's a big, it's a bigger decision and it does, I, I don't think it's something that we should rush and I don't think it's something that we should rush them into. There is property value implications for property owners to not have a parking lot, to not have that section. It's something they've been paying taxes on, so I think there's a lot of factors, but I would rather wait until they were all present and to wait, you know, to hash it all out.
Yeah, I think before we were to, okay, purchasing any of that and moving forward with that, I'd want to hear from all of them before we get to that point.
And just, I, I happen to have the easement here and the, the language says the city is allowed to pave and maintain the parking and drive areas. And then it further goes on to say that under the agreement, the city is responsible for snow removal. So again, we've always done the snow operations and we have the permission to perform maintenance, but not the obligation. And that's...
Why don't we just follow the easement as is, maintain it as is without outlay of cash and then the residents still keep that property and it's, it's on the tax rolls? It's, it's their property, but we're not out an investment in a property, but we're still doing the same obligations. It doesn't, it would save us money just to keep things as is and, and maintain it.
But we're not, we're not maintaining it today, it's private property. So that, under your scenario, Alderman, 26,000 people would be paying for maintenance of private property.
If I may chime in also...
But isn't that what you're saying?
When we built this parking lot, there was a special service area that was created specifically to pay for just the construction and the initial construction of it. After that, it lapsed. We did not have a continuing SSA that paid for the ongoing maintenance of the lot. So that lapsed a long time ago when that, when that happened. And then when we re-upped the easements, that was when I got involved in some of it. We had impressed these property owners with easements that were not limited in time because the original one also had a limited period of time. So those were 20-year easements originally when we built this parking lot. So those were intended to expire. And then we did re-up these because the people, you know, when we talked about it, we wanted to keep this parking lot, you know, as, as public parking. So that was something that happened later on.
I'm, I'm still lost because with the agreement today, we're using it as public parking. We have the right to maintain it so we can go in and redo it, make it nice. The property owners keep the property, but we can still maintain it, so it's good, public can use it. Why would we want to buy it? What, what more can we do or what more do we get from it by buying it?
We have, we do have the right to maintain it and if City Council wants us to, we can, but we have the right then to maintain what is private property. That's the problem. The property, the, the problem is the ownership issue. It's, it'd be spending public tax dollars to maintain private, private property.
As opposed to spending more public tax dollars to buy it and then maintain it?
Then it would all be city property and...
Okay, I, I mean, so it's just the name on the title, we're, we're, we're just paying extra for the name on the title?
No, today we don't have an obligation under the agreement to go through the expense of the resurfacing. So we could just let the, the private property portion, but for the snow removal obligation, continue to decay in the manner that it is. But we want to work with the property owners to come up with a solution that, where, you know, this, this gets fixed, but it isn't the city paying to, for a resurfacing of private property.
So I, I mean, okay, it, it's just syntax, it's just private versus public.
And I think your point...
We have the right to, to resurface it. We can, we can do that right now, today. It's just that we don't want to because it's private, it'll look bad.
So we did it different when, I'll give you an example of the, the parking lot that is behind 18 East Wilson. The private property owner and the city in partnership resurfaced that lot. The private property owner paid for the resurfacing of his portion of the parking lot and the city paid for the repaving of its portion of that parking lot.
So is that, so we only have the right to maintain the easement portion? We don't, okay.
We have the right to maintain it, not the obligation.
Owning it, owning it, we can be more consistent and do every aspect of the, the entire parking lot that we would take ownership of.
That's correct.
And that's above and beyond the easement. So we only have the right to maintain the easement portion?
Which is all of it.
Right, and we'll go back to that.
Okay.
Then we would have control of the design of it, the lighting of it, everything on it.
Yes.
If we own the lot.
Correct. Garbage dumpsters.
Right.
We have the right to do that now.
We do, again, it's, we have the right, but not an obligation. And if, if council decides that they want to maintain private property, that certainly is council's decision. And Alderman, to your point, I, I, and like Laura mentioned earlier, I, I don't think we're looking to purchase these properties for like fair market value. Because if the expectation is that the city's going to spend several hundred thousand, which is kind of going to what you're saying, then I don't think that's the option that really could get off the ground. If the expectation is that the city's going to spend a nominal sum, then your point kind of becomes moot because we've only spent a nominal sum and now we have ownership and we can maintain it.
Gotcha, and, and it goes back to my original question, what is a nominal sum? I, I see a problem because how many owners are there in total?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe eight, I think 10? I'm counting 10 off the top of my head. 11...
10 to 13.
About 13, I think.
And in the spirit of, of what you were saying, Laura, about working with them, when, when we met and they were all like, this is on the agenda, we can't, we can't be there, I can't be there, I can't be there. And I said, "Don't worry, City Council is not going to make any moves without hearing from you first." And I reassured them that you wouldn't want to talk to, about it too much until they could speak to you about it. And so I just, I just wanted to relay that message that they really kind of hope that this could be tabled until they can be...
Yeah, there's definitely more discussion.
You had mentioned that there weren't very many people at the meeting that you attended either and we felt obligated, but it was on the agenda since last Friday. And we had also sent letters out a week ago to all of the property owners and business owners. So I was, I, there isn't anyone here tonight and I, but I didn't know if anybody was going to show up, so...
And I don't think we're going to make a decision on any of this...
No.
...without having at least input from all of them.
Right.
It may not, I'll have to be physically present, but I feel like, you know, the timeframe of getting this figured out and moving forward is far enough away that we can get that input before we make a decision. But I also think it's important when we have something on the agenda that we discuss it, especially when it's a discussion item. Because I think it's important for us as a council to kind of know where each other stand on this before we go any further. Because if we said, "No, we don't want to do any of this, we're just going to stay with what we have," then why do we involve them? So I think this is important that we have this discussion to decide where we're going. Mark was, no was next.
How many of the businesses are owned by the building owners?
Not many.
So are we talking to the building owners or are we talking to businesses?
Both.
Okay, just because it...
We even sent it to tenants who live above the businesses and are neither business owners nor property owners.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think back to the behind 18 Wilson, that when that was paved and we, the major business owner paid his portion and we paid our portion, but then there was at least one other business that said, "No, I don't want to pave it." So you get this mismatch of things and that's, that's what I'm concerned about is we're just going to have this patchwork quilt of paving back there. And then we have the, we can maintain it, which means we could stripe it or we don't have to stripe it. I mean, it, I don't even know where, how we do things when we have this weird thing. So, I mean, I, unfortunately, my life has not allowed me to meet with those business owners right now, so hopefully I can soon, but it, part of me says, yeah, it's, you're looking at building owners versus businesses and who's, you know, I understand the businesses benefit from it, the building owners don't really benefit from it, except for the fact that then they don't have to pay for it.
They get tenants.
They get tenants anyway. Is, how much is...
I, I wouldn't put a business where I wouldn't have sufficient parking for my customers.
I'm saying that they have, how many are abandoned right now? How many don't have tenants?
How many of those don't have, none of them because they have public parking behind them.
That's what I'm saying. And we have a public parking sign there. I know it's a more complicated discussion and like I said, I haven't been able to talk with them, but if, if it was me, I would just buy the whole thing and just take care of it as one thing and let's move on. But it's got, again, it's got to be nominal because we're not, they, sorry, not paying full value of that.
Well, good luck, you're negotiating with 13 different property owners.
That's the problem.
We've got to decide on a price per square foot or something, present it. They're either all in or out, but we can't be negotiating different prices to neighbors based on their negotiating skills. I mean, that, that's a, going to be a nightmare.
Yeah, and trust me, I've been through that. That was what I did with the, with the easements originally. So, you know, I, I did talk to all the property owners and deal with that when we did the re-up of the easements, so...
And that might take until 2033.
Could be, could be. I mean, you know, if, if we have to do that, we can do that. I mean, that's, that's all part of the... Could be, could be. I mean, you know, we, but if we have to do that, we can do that. I mean, that's, that's all part of the, you know, negotiations.
Leah, you're next.
So if they, if it stays private, does the city, we are still collecting property tax? So in some ways it's to our benefit for it to stay private.
For that purpose, yes. But it is really becoming quite the eyesore.
Well, but we can maintain it and keep it a public parking lot because of the, um, current easements that we have, right?
Right.
So if it stays private, we're still collecting property tax on the parking lot that are back there. And we get the benefit of using it as public parking while they're still paying us property tax. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, that's where the SSA comes in. You do it as an SSA and then same thing. And one, one other thing to think about too is that, you know, the, the business owners there have looked to have vents in, in the back area. And right now, the property being bifurcated as it is, um, creates potential problems. So if you have, um, Full Moon wanting to have an event, they can literally only go on their twenty-five foot section of it because otherwise they're actually on their neighbor's property. So if we wanted to have something that's more of a unified type of event, then, you know, we probably should have that as a public property so that they could use the whole lot as, as necessary.
You know, following the prior model, when the, originally it was all resurfaced, the SSA was put in place. You know, the, the ongoing, um, maintenance and filling of potholes is really not the huge expense here, right? It's when it gets to the point of deterioration where it's at now, where, you know, last time the strategy was to put the SSA in place in order to pay for that lot to be resurfaced. So that's why that's also up there as an option.
And I think Scott correctly, did we also use the SSA to buy it?
That's how we, uh.
Or to, or just to improve it?
It was just improvement.
Improvement, okay.
All the properties we had, uh, originally in nine, in the nineties when this was built, uh, were all easements, but they were twenty-year easements.
I just have a question. If I'm understanding correctly, if we were to purchase this, we would not only have to maintain the parking lot as far as resurfacing and clearing, but are we also taking care of the garbage and the light poles and the electric that's services those lights in that area?
We already maintain the lights today.
Yes.
And the only role for the garbage would be some comprehensive plan where we could do like a corral. We wouldn't be providing garbage services to the, to the business owners. It's just today, it's a little bit of chaos out there. Everybody kind of has their own dumpster and puts it kind of where they want to put it. And the idea would be to be able to have a comprehensive plan.
So we would be using city property for them to corral their garbage?
Yeah, and there's, there's, fortunately or unfortunately, there's lots of precedents for that. There, there's several businesses that have used city property over the years for their garbage dumpsters.
Use Boyale is a good example.
Use Boyale is a good example. And then Parking Deck is a good example. There's, there's, there's a lot of precedents for that. We don't charge them any rent.
And I think, to me, the benefit to that is if we provide a space for it and it's all corralled there, it's much cleaner.
Yeah.
Especially in a public parking lot that has thirteen buildings that are, you know, thirteen business owners, if it's in one place. And if you look at any strip mall or any commercial area that has multiple tenants that gets all the way they do it. They don't allow everybody to have their own separate thing. They dictate the terms and then you abide by that. And it's ten times cleaner than letting everybody do their own thing.
But we would be managing their garbage?
No, we wouldn't be managing their garbage. We would literally build a corral and.
There's where you get to put your garbage. That's all, that's our involvement.
But they would have to maintain the service and if they don't maintain the service, then we may have an issue then with garbage.
Well, if they don't maintain.
They'd be cited by Scott's department for that.
Yeah, we'd cite them for code violations, which we have done. There's garbage overflowing or whatever.
I just want to throw, you know.
Absolutely.
All the elements that are out there to consider because everybody's focused on paving and.
Right.
You know, Gary's thrown in some of these other things that.
Should be considered as well.
To me, that's one of the big benefits of it is to be able to clean that aspect of that parking, that area up.
Been talked about for years.
Yeah, you have another.
So going back to if we own it all, like, okay, so Full Moon right now, they can, they can have a little garden out there because they own that property. Once we own it, they can't without filing a permit with us to have a beer garden or something, correct?
Currently, we are allowing people to create outdoor service areas because of the pandemic. It was done by executive order and at some point this city council is going to have to decide whether that becomes a permanent part of our, you know, that we continue to allow that. It is different when it occurs on private property versus public property. Where it occurs on private property, you need the property owner's permission as well as submitting for a building permit from the city. On public property, you also have to lease the public property from the city and have the building permit in place. Did I explain that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, in some cases, we just do the outdoor dining licenses depending on, you know, if it's a permanent fixture or if it's temporary. So if it's a temporary thing, it's a seasonal, then we just do the outdoor dining permits, sort of like Wilson Street and. See, and that's where this becomes fascinating. I have a hard time believing you're gonna get thirteen people to agree to the same thing because Full Moon doesn't want to give up their right to that, to do what they're doing right now. And now they'll have to apply for permits. It, it just changes it for some and others that may not care. They're gonna be like, yeah, jeez, I don't want anything to do with it and take care of it. If we can get thirteen people to agree to this, I'll be surprised. Or agree to one, the same thing, I guess is the point.
I would ask if, um, Alderman Beck, did you have any indication from the group how, uh, when would be the, when should we bring this back? One month from now or two months from now?
Uh, we didn't have a timeline. Um, we're trying to get together as quickly as possible to discuss. But we don't have a date. Uh, one month seems reasonable though.
Okay.
And just because I need to bring it up, Abby, have you discussed with, uh, legal counsel how far you should go in this discussion?
No, I was, I would have hung up if I thought it was gonna go this far, sorry.
Okay, and I, and I think that that's something that we should consider just for you to make sure that that's okay before we go any further with that, you know, in, in ongoing discussions on it. Okay. I think we're done with that one. Um, up next, we will move on to item seven, which is ordinance twenty-one thirty-three annexing two south five twenty-five South Verdant Road. It's an involuntary position. Scott?
Thank you.
One at a time this time?
Well, some of them are multiples, some of them are singles. It depends on where we are. We're running out of the single ones. So, uh, this will be one of the last single ones that we'll be doing. Uh, this is a, uh, property that we've been negotiating with annexation for two years, two plus years now. Uh, we've gone back and forth with an annexation agreement on this and we weren't able to come to terms, uh, until today, apparently. Um, so we received a revised annexation agreement from them. We did publish the notice for an involuntary annexation. Council is here, uh, the property owners council is here tonight also. Uh, we had a conversation about it and, uh, I think we are in agreement that, uh, instead of taking the involuntary, uh, we can take the, um, annexation agreement back to you. They will agree to sign the agreement and the petition as revised, um, and get it to me by Monday. They will also agree to pay for the public notice because we have to do another notice for an annexation agreement because of the process that we have to do that. We already paid for a involuntary notice, uh, and then they would agree to voluntarily annex the property, uh, reluctantly. But, you know, they would be agreeable to doing that, uh, as, as a voluntary annexation. So we would, assuming they can get that signed back to me by Monday, um, we could publish a notice and then, uh, have it probably at the mid-August city council meeting for final approval.
Okay.
Kate has anything else she wants to add to that or not, so.
Okay, so we got everything squared away?
I think, I think we do, yes. Yeah, so a little leverage was.
So that's really all we're at tonight? So we don't, no action on this then?
I mean, you can, you can vote to proceed and then we'll, we know, or that we will do the, um, annexation agreement as if.
Will it be the same ordinance number then? Just changed from?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll change it so that it doesn't say involuntary, but it will keep the same ordinance number.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Anybody online have any questions? Property owners council have any comments? Okay, you're good, okay. All right, then we'll, uh, I'll make the motion to recommend, uh, council ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-three annexing two south five twenty-five Verdant Road, uh, changing it from an involuntary to a voluntary petition.
Second.
Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Ewer. Roll call please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
Sorry, my internet is unstable. It says, I apologize if you can't hear me. Um, Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet? And Sola?
Aye.
Motion carry twelve to zero.
All right, that's me. I apologize. I'm just coming back online.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I'll move on to item number eight, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-three dash R, executing a lease for outdoor restaurant seating area at eleven North Batavia Avenue.
This is a, uh, lease for the city property. The Newton House actually is private property. We own a piece of land that is south of that. Uh, we have talked about surplusing this and we are in the middle of the appraisal process, um, to try and sell this to the adjacent property owners. But in the meantime, uh, we needed to develop a lease agreement with the property or the tenant, uh, in order to use that as an outdoor dining area. So, uh, we did, uh, go back and forth on a couple of things and we did finally come to an agreement on, on the, uh, agreement with the, uh, use of the city property as well as the annual, uh, payment that would be required as part of that. I anticipate and I'm hopeful that, uh, we will only be able to do this once and the property will be conveyed to the adjacent donor and then they will have to do that as part of whatever their agreements are with the tenant.
Everybody understand this one? Know where it's at? I think half the bricks or more of the bricks are already in.
Bricks are already in. We gave them authority to continue once we had the lease in hand.
Okay, no questions. I will, uh, make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-three dash R, executing a lease for outdoor restaurant seating area at eleven North Batavia Avenue.
Second.
Did you get that, Leah?
The room.
Okay, doesn't happen. She's the one I heard on it, so. Uh, motion by Wolf, second by Lehman. Roll call please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Thank you. Ewer?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet? And Sola?
Aye.
Motion carry twelve to zero.
Thank you. All right, up next is item number nine, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-six dash R, authorizing purchase of an eighty niche, um, combination columbaria from American Wilbert Vault Corporation for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Alderman Rosado?
I have this and Gary came up to the podium, so Gary, I'll let you handle this.
Okay, thank you. This has been a long, disgusting project, uh, several years now, actually. We did receive a private donation and that donation was given specifically for improvements to the West Side Cemetery. And again, a couple of years ago, uh, we decided we were gonna use that, that donation towards the purchase of a columbaria, which is used for, uh, ash interment and ash burials have become more and more ash, ash, um, cremation ceremonies have become more and more common nowadays. Getting a columbaria on, on our site, um, just becomes another service for our residents. We have worked with, um, American Wilbert Vault Company from the beginning on this. Again, going back, my recollection is twenty seventeen, I think is when we first started this discussion. They do have one in stock, which is basically the, the, the model we've always kind of been looking at. Um, we did hold off on this at the start of the year, uh, but now feel that we can move forward. The, the in-stock, um, I gave you a picture of it in the, in the packet here. It's an eighty niche and it, um, comes delivered to the site, but it does not include the foundation or other, um, appurtenances such as, you know, sidewalks and benches. So we are recommending to wave formal bidding and go with American Wilbert Vault Corporation. Um, they've had long service with our cemetery, uh, for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand. And then we have seventy-two thousand in the budget and staff, uh, would then utilize the remaining twelve thousand for the foundation and then a basic sidewalk to be able to allow people to walk up to the columbaria. And we can enhance that sidewalk and potentially put benches in in our future years' budget. That's our recommendation.
And refresh my memory, I think if I remember right, you have that set up so that you can do multiples into the future in that area?
If we, if we desire to, that area is set up that way. That's how Billy's got it set up, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. For those that didn't know that that's the way it's set up at the West Side Cemetery, there's space to expand.
There's space set aside there, yeah.
And I, I think we've already had inquiries about this, haven't we?
We have it again, ash burials, because that's our only option today.
Right.
It's become more and more common, so I think this, this, um, option will become a popular option.
Right. Any discussion? I have a question. Do we charge per niche? How much is that?
Yep, that, that's definitely, um, we just did, sorry, I just dropped that. We just did a whole update to the cemetery fees and it's in that schedule of fees as well. We're gonna be having, uh, having, uh, we do charge for all those.
Do you, do you recall what, what it is?
I could get that for you before the council meeting. I could send out an email and let you know.
That'd be, I mean, it kind of pays for itself though, I would imagine, right? It's gonna be close.
Yeah, over time. And that's, the object is not to make a profit, obviously. We're a public cemetery, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Well, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-one seventy-six R, authorizing purchase of eighty niche combination columbaria from American Willett Vault Corporation for amount not to exceed sixty thousand.
Second.
Motion by Rosado, second by Knop. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chantet? Sola?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
And Miller?
Aye.
Motion carry twelve to zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, up next is item number ten, um, resolution twenty-one seventy-seven R, approved agreement with, um, um, Mechanical Industry for emergency repair of the Cherry Park Lift Station. Alderman Rosado?
Yeah, it says city services, but I think this is public. Yeah, this is actually public utilities.
Alderman Serone, then it's yours.
Sure, I'm gonna, we've, we've had recent developments on this, so I'm gonna turn it right over to, to Gary.
Thank you.
To explain, bring it up to speed.
I had to jump back to the. I had to jump back to the table back here because I really need to share my screen, so I, I need to ask Laura if I could, uh, get permission to share my screen. Click share. All right, can everyone see that? I'll wait for a second. There we go. As Alderman Serone said, there have been a couple of developments. Um, let's go back to the start of this one. Actually, go back to the start of another project. We've hired Trotter and Associates to update the wastewater master plan. Council approved a task order for that a couple of months ago and as part of the update to the master plan, Trotter's scope includes inspection of all our lift stations and then an update of the plan associated with each lift station. As part of their inspection of the lift stations, they have done, um, video inspe, video camera work, um, as well as physical, you know, physical inspection, site inspections. Our crews discovered a problem at Cherry Park and that problem was subsequently documented as part of Trotter's, um, videoing of, of, of the lift station. So, full credit goes to Trotter and Associates for, for this, um, visual, um, visual aid because it really, really helps to explain. So, the camera, as you can tell, is kind of down inside the lift station, I'm looking up now. And the two bright spots are the lids to go out to the surface. And you'll notice that the structure is a circle, but the left-hand side of the structure is kind of cut off. I'll explain that in a minute. I'm just trying to give you some bearings here, um, as we, as we discover this problem within the lift station itself. And sorry, I don't have a mouse, I'm just using one of my ma, my laptop, so it's a little, little more jerky than it normally is. Down at the bottom, in the bottom of what we call the wet well, and that's what this is, this is the wet well. Uh, gravity sewers drain into this wet well. At the bottom of the wet well are two submersible pumps. Those two submersible pumps pump up and through these riser pipes. So, there's one riser pipe and there's a second riser pipe right there. And at the bottom... Just have to ignore that. At the bottom is this, and you'll see out of the bottom of this riser pipe is gushing water. That's not supposed to be happening. The riser pipe itself has failed. This lift station was installed in the late 80s. Uh, we really haven't done any major, um, major rehab or rehabilitation or reconstruction of the lift station since the 80s. So, it's getting to that point where it, it's going to need work and obviously we're now starting to see signs of that. I'm going to go up a little bit here, so those riser pipes come up and it's a little dark, but you can kind of see. It goes into that flat section, remember I told you earlier how the, this section of the manhole is kind of flat and carved out? Because within this area is a separate room, if you will, and within that room are things like check valves to keep all the water from flowing back down. That's the valve vault, what we would call it. And then a little more background, just to make things a little easier to understand. That's not a riser pipe, that's what we call a rail, a pump rail. And then over here is another pump rail, right there. And this is actually an easier picture, so you can see there's a riser pipe, that's the riser pipe that in this picture was failed. There's a pump rail, and then here's the two chains. So, the chains are connected to the pumps. When you want to pull a pump out for servicing, you use the chain to lift out the pump. The pump rides along the rail so that it's not just flopping in a 30-foot deep manhole and the pump goes down the rail and then it is seated properly at the bottom of the wet well. And again, this wet well is 30, 35 feet deep. And unfortunately, the latest development was, so we, we, we found this failure. Timing was that Trotter was able to video this failure so that you guys could see it. And unfortunately, timing was that over this past weekend, this second riser pipe has now failed. So, we now have two failed riser pipes and as the pumps kick on, you can tell, a lot of the water goes right back down into the wet well, so the pumping capacity has greatly decreased because we're just pumping water in a circle at this point. So, we now have, um, we now have emergency bypass pumping in place. So, we now have bypass pumps in a manhole just upstream from this, this wet well. So, the gravity sewer all flows through that manhole and then it flows into this wet well. So, we're, we're collecting the water, we're intercepting the water in that manhole just upstream. We're now bypass pumping that water around this failed structure and directly back into the force main, there's a way for us to connect back into the force main. So, the system is working now, we've essentially turned another manhole into a new wet well on a temporary basis. And that will allow us to go into this wet well and we will replace the riser pipes, we're going to replace the valves that are up in that room, we're going to replace the two rails, uh, we're going to replace, uh, the, the boots or the seats that the pumps sit on. So, basically, uh, you know, a lot of rehabilitation and replacement work in order to get this lift station back into, um, fully working order. Before you tonight was a resolution. I, I had said in my most recent email, because of the emergency situation we discovered this past week, I don't think we will, uh, I don't, wouldn't recommend approving this resolution because at this point, we're still trying to get, um, a, a better feel for what the actual costs are going to be. My guess is that what was a $46,000 project is probably now a $56,000 project or, or maybe possibly a $60,000 project. So, I don't want to get council approval for something that I already know is not going to be the accurate cost. Um, it didn't go from 40, 42,000 or 46, it did not go from 46,000 to 146,000, but it probably certainly went up to, I would guess, 60,000. So, until we have a feel for that, I don't want to, I don't really want to get your formal approvals, but I wanted to make you aware that we are proceeding forward with the emergency repairs. We will come back to city council with, once we have a feel for the actual costs. Um, that will then now include bypass pumping, which wasn't contemplated before because we didn't need to bypass pump, we could have simply shut off this one pump with the failed riser pipe, used the second pump to keep the lift station operating, repaired the broken riser pump, and then use that pump to pump out while we repaired the other riser pipe. We could have used both pumps, you know, back and forth, can't do that anymore. So, now we have an added cost of bypass pumping. So, I guess that's where I'm going to leave it tonight, is that make you aware of this, um, make you know that the cost is, is probably, you know, another 20, 30,000, probably 20, I would guess, on top of what you see there. But I will come back to you once we know what those costs are going to be.
Gary, I, I have one word to say to you and that is duct tape.
Yeah, you know, we, we thought, I mean, I, okay, so, so if anyone is familiar with like a water main break, because that's what a water main break looks like. Uh, you know, they'll say, well, why can't you put a clamp on that, uh, in order to, to fix it? And we would if the condition of the pipe wasn't so poor that the clamp wouldn't work. And that, that's literally what, what the problem is now, is the pipe condition is so poor that if we put a clamp on it, we don't have any confidence that it wouldn't break someplace else.
Gary, I have one question. Uh, maybe two. When we do this, has the pumps, are the, have the pumps been replaced recently or do we know the life cycle of those pumps or the typical life cycle or is it the right time to put the pumps in there where you got this all apart?
No, because, because number, there's a couple, that's a, there's several aspects to this question. I explained earlier how we can pull the pumps out.
Right.
And so, the pumps do get pulled out, they get pulled out, they get rebuilt, they get maintained.
Okay.
Those are, those are something we can maintain, uh, on, on a routine basis with our guys. What you can't do is, our guys can't pull out the entire riser pump, pipe, or we can't pull out the entire, you know, rail assembly. Those are things that have stayed in the hole since the 80s.
Okay.
Pumps come out though, but pumps get rebuilt, they get new impellers, or if we need to replace a pump entirely, we can do that.
Can do it, okay.
That's something our guys can do ourselves.
Okay. Because I just wondered too, is, you know, how, how did we not see that these are deteriorating that far if we're doing regular maintenance on them?
We don't, we don't, I mean, we wouldn't even have, even if we saw that they were deteriorating, we would basically let them go to the point of failure because
Okay.
you can't pull out a riser pump, there's no, there's, there's no, there's no way to pull out a riser pipe short of redoing exactly what we're doing right now.
Okay. And, and that's just kind of a knowledge for me to know how those are set up, because all I can think is when I look at that is, okay, it's a some pump and the, the check valve blew apart and it's just circulating back inside the tank.
Kind of where it's
And that's exactly what that looks like.
Or failure in the pipe.
Yes.
And, and if we look back at the 2014 Trotter study and the 2009 Trotter study and now what was going to be the 2021 Trotter study, you know, all the lift stations are set up with maintenance programs. And so, eventually, this one was going to be up for reconstruction because of its age. It just happens to be right now where it's failed and we need to get it reconstructed.
I have a question. What are the repercussions from this whole lift station not working right now?
So, that's what the emergency bypass pumping is for.
Okay.
And it, because, okay, so if, if we discovered this on Friday, like, like we did, and now the whole lift station has failed, and then the repercussions could be potentially backups into people's home.
Okay.
So, the reason why we have emergency pumping in place is we now have essentially established a brand-new lift station in that other manhole. That other manhole, that other lifts, that other lift station, I'll put that in quotes, is just as capable and so it's operating, it's fine. No one has anything to worry about out there any more than they did when this was out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And do we have to just, uh, make a motion to table this until you come back?
Uh, yeah, it's on the agenda, you should probably officially table it and then, then I can come back.
Okay, did, did anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, with that said, I would make a motion that we table resolution 21-077-R until further notice.
Second.
We have a motion by Serone and, uh, second by Miller.
Yes.
The table, um, 21-77-R. Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chancet? Sofa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
And You're?
Aye.
Motion carry 12 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Right, up next is resolution 21-75-R, Microsoft Enterprise Agreement Authorization. And I see Howard is here to let us know all about that.
Good evening, everyone. About three years ago, we switched our licensing for Microsoft Office from a, uh, from a purchase to a subscription. And the subscription is, um, is a three-year contract with Microsoft and it expires August 31st. So, with that, um, subscription of Office 365, it included the, um, posting of our email through Exchange, uh, some additional email accounts. What used to be Advanced Threat Protection is now Defender, so that kind of scans our emails and looks for phishing and, and other, um, attacks. This product has really, uh, saved us during the pandemic, allowing people to use Teams and, uh, OneDrive, uh, which is our cloud storage for individual users. And staff has really, um, been using that quite a bit. It's also given us SharePoint, which, um, departments have the ability to use as an internal website to communicate with people. Uh, so, what we are looking at is, um, $69,143.21 annually, but because it comes with a three-year commitment, uh, that brought the total cost to, uh, $207,429.62. This cost is based on, or piggybacked on with the State of Illinois contract, so it is really about the best price we've been able to get on any Microsoft agreement.
Does anybody have any comments or questions?
There's just no other way to do this.
Well, as I was going to say
That's, that's the way of software.
365 is, that's what it's changed to and it was, I think, was what, three years ago, they made that change and I don't know that you can buy it anymore, can you? I think you have to
You can, but it's not recommended.
We get a lot of additional features with 365 plus the ability to stay current. In past years, when we were buying the licenses, I would have to come every number of years and ask to purchase new licenses. During that time, certain programs would upgrade themselves, but then wouldn't work with our old version of Office. So, it's best to keep everything upgraded.
Does anybody online have any comments or questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, resolution 21-75-R, Microsoft Enterprise Agreement Authorization.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by You're. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
You're?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chancet? And Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carry 12 to 0.
Okay.
Missed on the consent agenda?
Um, we could do that one on consent agenda. But if anybody has any problems, we can always take it off, but it'll go on a consent.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Do we want to put the columbaria on consent as well?
No, that can't be because it's got to be waived.
Oh, because of waived formal bidding. So, we'll have waived formal bidding before we approve it at a council meeting. Okay. All right, then we will move on to item number 12, um, resolution 21-78-R, approving change order to the contract with electric conduit construction to build a fiber hut, critical infrastructure communication node shelter at the Paramount Substation for an amount not to exceed $26,699.99. Gary?
Yeah, take it, Gary, but... No, go ahead.
It's hard when you're up on the screen to remember to send it to you, Nick.
No worries.
I'll jump in. Rahat, as Rahat says in his memo, through resolution 20-134, so last year, we actually approved a contract with electric conduit construction in the amount of 266,677 dollars to build a fiber building. As part of that contract bidding process, there actually was a math error that no one caught, neither us nor the contractor. And so, I need to step back with respects to hierarchy on bidding. The way bids work, if you have a unit-priced contract, which is what this was, the unit prices always govern. So, even if there's a math error, so that the totals come out a different number, it doesn't matter because the unit prices always govern. So, what should have been done in the ideal world was this captured upfront and we would have then multiplied the quantity by the unit price to get an accurate total, not the total which would have been listed on the contractor's bid sheet. And if the accurate total had been used, we would have been still the lowest bidder, electric conduit construction. So, the bid process was, was, in the end, would have turned out the same way, we would have still made the same recommendation for electric conduit construction, we would have just recommended to you a higher value than what was approved by city council, which kind of circles back to tonight and that, um, we are recommending this change order for the 26, 699 to basically correct the math there because that is what the contract should have been to begin with. And, um, again, he would have been the lowest contractor, so ultimately, this is to, think of it as a scribners error, if you will, but that's not really the proper term for that. But this then will finalize out the contract, um, by going with the change order, that'll finalize out the contract and, um, that's our recommendation.
Hey, thanks for the, uh, the background on that with the, uh, unit price because it, it became kind of a philosophical question, you know, what would have happened if now they come in, in second place, but, um, knowing that they had the lowest unit price, it, it ensured that they were still going to be the lowest price overall. But did, uh, anybody have any questions or comments? Gary, did you, were you about to add something?
I'm sorry. I, I just meant to say that unit prices are the highest in the hierarchy. So they are always the.
Right. No, that's great. It makes it easier to say it was a scribner's error. So, um, yeah, I, if nobody has any questions, I would make a motion that we approve resolution 21 dash zero seven eight dash R and approve the change order not to exceed twenty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Is it?
Motion by Saron, second by Miller. Uh, roll call please.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Back?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanzet absent, Solfa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi absent, Malay?
Aye.
And Uwer?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carry twelve to zero.
Can I, can I jump in with a question before we move on?
Yep.
Gary, what would have happened? Wa- was this work done already?
Yeah, the work is finished. We're just closing out the contract and it was during the closeout process that everyone discovered this math error.
So is there a, uh, a process in which if, if this error would have brought them to the second most expensive, um, on the, on the bid sheet? Would we be, is, is there a, a standard operating procedure to just only approve up to the second bid or, or to fight it or, or what would, has this happened before?
I can't remember in my career, something like that happening where you actually get to the end of a project and find out someone's not the little bidder. Um, I don't know what these, what, what the theoretical lowest bidder's attorney would do in that case.
Okay. I was just curious as we were talking about it. Surprised that that's never happened, but. Thanks, Alan.
Yep.
Um, this is, this is Rahat. Can I interject? So if that happens, typically you fight it and you tell the contractor that he has to accept, um, his unit prices, you know, that he, he offered, you know? But, uh, when you have a unit price contract, you typically always multiply with the quantity. Um, and, and that's what you award, uh, even though there was, there is a math error. It's interesting, uh, question because, you know, if he becomes the second lowest bidder, then, then, um, then the apparent lowest bidder could fight it with us, you know? That's why most of the times, most of the times, all the bidders, they will ask for a bid cap so that they can check the math. Typically they do that too. And I make sure that they are, they are not losing the bid to somebody else.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Up next is project status.
Thank you. I just have a few things and, um, because I was not, I was on vacation last week and, um, not at the city council meeting. Um, I did want to thank everybody for their, uh, cooperation, collaboration and support for the wonderful fireworks show that we had here in the city of Batavia, including the fireworks committee, um, police and fire, uh, public works that comes out to, um, set up for the event. But I also received, um, an email from Eric Locker at the Park District. Uh, and, and he was very appreciative of the job that the volunteers did, um, for cleanup the day following the events. Um, there were several volunteers out there from nine AM to twelve-thirty and Eric said that the grounds were spotless and so that they really appreciated that. Alan?
I left to go fishing at about five o'clock in the morning on the fifth. And I don't think I've ever seen the aftermath of the fireworks so clean. I mean, I don't know how much time they spent there to clean up what was actually there, but there was no dumped over barrels. I mean, it looked as clean as it usually does after it gets cleaned up when I went past it at five AM. So, I mean, I was shocked. So I think that may be a reason why it was that clean and that, that good of a job. But I was pretty surprised at how well everybody behaved this year.
That's good.
We had, we had eight people out there for about three hours.
Mm-hmm.
Including several aldermen showed up and helped.
But I mean, sometimes I've seen it, I remember in the past just being destroyed. I mean, a lot of garbage out there. And this time I was pretty, pretty impressed by the way the public handled it.
The most interesting thing we had to deal with was over on the lawn of the Covenant Church. That was the receiver of all the cardboard fireworks pieces that flew up. And I imagine there must have, yeah, they're all little, but I bet you there were seven hundred different little pieces that somebody picked up and put in a bag. I mean, they weren't only as big as about this, but they were just all over the lawn there where, you know, they're out there with their daycare center and everything else. So we had to get it cleaned up.
Get it cleaned.
So, so it got done, but you know, it was great cooperation.
Yes.
We had one of the biggest turnouts of, of contributors we've ever had. It worked out very nice.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
Um, in community and economic development, um, we are reviewing revisions to, uh, what is now being called the Avenue Marketplace Development. The former Avenue Chevrolet site and we expect that, um, that will be going to a plan commission hearing on August fourth.
What's it going to be?
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be called Avenue Marketplace.
And what are we going to do there?
Um, that will be the site of the, uh, Starbucks and, um, Chipotle.
Oh, you're talking about, I thought you were talking about Avenue up here on the top of the hill.
Nope, nope. Sorry for the confusion. The second Avenue Chevrolet location.
I'm cool.
All right. Also happy, always like to tell the story about our businesses here expanding. And, um, Bar One Steel over on Pearson Drive, um, we issued the permit for their building expansion over there. Uh, the plan commission will consider a number of items at their meeting on July 21st, including a conditional use for a hotel. Don't get too excited. It is just a bed and breakfast with a few rooms. Um, a yard setback variance at six hundred Latham Street and revisions to the parking regulations, creating changes to the minimum and maximum number of parking spaces in various zoning districts. We also have begun the demolition work on the home at nine sixteen Park Street. And that's beginning with the siding removal and external asbestos mitigation. And then the actual building demolition, we anticipate to be next week. In public works, the sanitary sewer lining is underway on Main Street. It's some of the last major work that needs to get done to complete this project should be minimal interruption to traffics and residents in the area. Material delivery issues have unfortunately delayed the electric substation breaker replacement project. So it's likely that the start date will be late, delayed until early fall for that project. And the city's annual roadway resurfacing sidewalk repair news, new sidewalk programs are all underway. And they will run through the next few months. Um, and just once again, to remind residents that if you want to check if your road or sidewalk is in this year's plan, um, you can go to the city website and at the bottom of the homepage, there is, uh, you can click on city maps. And one of the city maps is the, uh, capital programs. And when you open that up, one of the overlays, map overlays is for roadway resurfacing and sidewalk repair and new sidewalks. And you can see if your street's on there. Uh, the fire department has been performing mask fit testing for all of our fire and police personnel. Something that's really important that we do, um, uh, on an annual basis. And that's all that I have unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes. Mark?
Um, just because, uh, King County's talking about Fabian thirty-one.
Yes.
Reminded me, where are we at with, uh, road diet study for thirty-one?
Uh, the road diet study. Gary?
We're working on the, um, RFQ right now for consultants. So that'll be going out.
Thank you. Mike?
Any updates on one North Washington?
Um, so I did speak with Dave Patzelt today and, um, they have not yet secured their financing, but they feel that they're going to hear something back from, uh, their lender within the next three weeks. And the reason being that because the, um, material prices, uh, have now come back down, um, the bank would like them to resubmit their, um, estimation for the cost of the project. And then that will be reviewed and hopefully approved.
Do we not have a deadline with them on the RDA?
Yes. In fact, um, we, under the, um, timeline that is in the RDA, this would have been the date on which, uh, they should have applied for the building permit.
Okay. So does that put them then in violation of it or do we allow, is there any allowing for an extension or how are we handling that?
That is a matter up, up to city council, how they want to treat that.
Cause I think at this point, we need to, I guess, I would like to with some certainty know what's going on within the next, you know, I guess. If they don't have an answer to us within three weeks and in four, I want to have him in here to explain to us why.
That, that's exactly what I told him today. So, you know, let's, let's see where we're at in, in three weeks and maybe even regardless of that, of where things stand, that within three to four weeks have, uh, Dave come in and give us an update and status and discuss this.
Okay.
Can I chime in? Why, if, if today was the date and it's a decision made by council, why are we just finding out about it based on a question from Alan?
I just had the conversation at four-thirty this afternoon. So I'm, you know, I just had not prepared, uh, you know, all of the, the elements of, of that yet.
Are there any other critical dates in the, uh, timeline coming up that we should be aware of?
I don't know what follows July thirteenth.
There's another date, but I don't recall what it is offhand. I have it on my.
I, I think it's something like within thirty days of receiving the notice to proceed that we would do the closing on the property to transfer interest.
It's something, it's, you know, it's thirty, but possibly sixty days, I think is what it is. But I, I, I don't recall the exact numbers right now. But yes.
Your honor?
Yeah, this year is proving to be the year of exciting weekend, exciting weekend. And this past weekend, our excitement was over on Viking and the five hundred block. And the resident in the hot, in the home was on vacation. It was in suburban Cleveland, visiting relatives. And the neighbor walked over and found that the chimney was on fire. And so, um, they called the fire department. Thank goodness they did. Uh, I just happened to be going down the Hart Road Hill when the tone came over my pager. So I beat feet over there and I got there before the fire department got there. So I got out and being an old time fireman, I knew what to do. So first thing I knew they were going to want is some pictures of what this looks like. Why did this fire start the way it did? And there was some electrical devices on the side of the house and apparently one of those shorted out and started this inside of the chimney on fire. It was a wood framed chimney. So it was burning. So it got going pretty good. And if I think of it tomorrow, I'll have my Karen print some of my pictures up and put them out as an email to the city council so you can see what this looked like. Cause this was a very unique s- situation. So I'm standing there and the police come over and they say, uh, do you know whose house this is? And I say, uh, I guess I don't. And they said, well, this is State Representative Murra Hershhauser's house is on fire here. So with that, the fire department showed up and, you know, they weren't very far away and they got the engine three-quarter line off and went right to the pump on the, on the, or the tank on the engine. And they hit that thing and they had it out in about six seconds. I mean, the fire was pretty spectacular, but it cooled itself down. But I was talking to Murra yesterday and they, they had quite a, ended up with quite a bit of damage because fire got into the chimney and then it came down into the fireplace and into the house. So now they're having to have their whole inside of their house picked, cleaned up and cleaned and whatever have you. But it was one of those few more minutes and that could have really been quite a little picture there. But, uh, it just shows you where, I don't know, every weekend, the last two or three weekends, the fire, police and public works have had some real challenging things. I think I may have told you last week about the tree that came down at the cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it's just been one thing after another. The weekend is the dangerous time around here. You just gotta watch it. Nothing we can do about it, but it just keeps coming. A, a new event that, you know, visits, visits us every weekend. So we're just, yes.
But also the, uh, surrounding communities that came and joined. Cause they just.
Went by your house screaming.
Yes. That's how I got, I was at work and got the text about it. So, um, I came.
Well, see, that's all.
Probably after you left.
That's all automatic, you know, with the way this is all set up. If we have a reported house fire in Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles and North Aurora and Fermilab are all invited to come now. And they all know ahead of time what they're supposed to bring. And, you know, St. Charles brings their ladder truck and a team and Geneva brings the backup pumper and North Aurora brings a pumper. So we get two extra pumpers and a ladder truck. And then Fermilab brings a change recorders company to our east side station. Or if it's nearby, they'll stop, as they did the other day, they, you know, get a lot of out there. So they like to come when they can. So they stopped by to see what was going on. They were there to, yeah, we had great turnout. I had one of your neighbors mentioning, boy, this is great to see. How quickly it got here, you know?
Well, it was nice that, um, her neighbors found that and they were able to connect them being out of town with the firefighters so they can make arrangements where they didn't have to drive home that night. Um, so everything was secure and, um, so that was really nice that that was.
Well, the police stepped, really stepped in on that one too. So it was a joint thing by all of us. And then I know we had a call electric out there too. So there was, there was good turnout of the city at this thing.
Okay. Does anybody else have any others?
Uh, I think I wanted to, um, commend our police department for, the mayor gave a description of what happened at, um, Kirk and Wilson uh, last week. I actually saw a video from one of the firefighters of it and, uh, who was there. It had a little bit more active description of what it was and, um, like the bottle rockets being shot at officers. We, our officers maintained, um, great control and thank you to the adjacent, um, departments for coming to assist. Cause it was, uh, the video I saw was a lot more intense than, than, uh.
Than my description?
Yes, than your description. So thank you to our police department. Thank you to the surrounding ones. And, um, yeah.
Yeah, that, the, the little snippets that I've seen of it, it looked like it got this close to getting really out of hand.
It was pretty intense.
And I think the good thing was is the immediate show of a lot more force and it made them all decide, we need to get out of here quick. Okay. If there's no others, then I look for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Knop?
Second.
Second by Solfa. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Everybody gets to go home.